Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board Meeting, Board Business Meeting tonight. We're grateful for all that are present here and look forward to a good meeting. Just several reminders that happened. I tend to forget where the fire exits are, but I think most people are aware of them. They are on either side of the blue curtains. And then, of course, that's two there, and then out the doors and to your left, probably the way you came in, are the fire exits. We are still under state mandate, and even listening to the news before coming in here, right, to be wearing a face mask properly over the mouth and nose, and heard that the governors, I don't know if the word's threatening or not, talking about more stricter things since we are, tend to be in the highest area. So hopefully, we don't contribute to that type of spread here tonight, hoping everybody will cooperate to keep everyone safe. And just also mentioning, we have a Code of Conduct, right? As soon as we cross the border onto school district property, it starts there. It doesn't start at the door here. It starts at the edge of our property, and the Code of Conduct conducts, or is our controlling what policy over what and how we behave here. And grateful, especially over the last few months, that as adults, we have generally set a good example for the students and letting them know that we don't hold ourselves to any different standard than we hold them. After that, though, I am ready to seek approval for the agenda as outlined. Do I have a motion? Brian, thank you. Second, Erica? Any questions, comments, or need to make them? Yes?
I just want to make a motion for our...
Do you want to put your microphone?
Sorry, make a motion for 7B, the policy first read. Can we pull 1514 and just have it be its own?
Okay, so we have a motion to have policy 1514 polled for its own discussion first read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Erica? Any questions or comments about that? All in favor of the amend? Okay, so we will amend the agenda, making that, I don't know whether it's 7B or C or somewhere in there, Pam, if you'll make a note. But now, a vote to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing, hearing, none? 7-0. Okay. Problem is, I'll have to try and remember that when we get there, since it shows differently. Please remind me if I fail to, but thank you. And I'm going to hand this first part of the agenda over to our superintendent, Mr. Provenzano.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to come here and celebrate our Fairport Board of Education. Last month was the official Board recognition. This month, we have presentation from our students. We're looking forward to having our students come forward and share a little bit about a board member and a contribution that we made on behalf of the school library in that board member's name. Our board does so many wonderful things for our community. We see our board's vision in action every single day, and we're looking forward to having our students speak to their very important contributions. Right now, we are going to have, we'll start with Minerva Deland, Mr. Monticelli will speak here for Mrs. Cardona. On behalf of Mrs. Cardona, you'll be coming up with... Yep?
It's my honor to introduce Mary Bell and say thank you to Marty Cardona for my understanding is, before becoming a Board of Education member, she was a principal at Brooks Hill for 15 years and now is 10 years as a Board of Education member. So a huge debt of gratitude for your service to our community, to our children. And I'm joined here by Mary Bell, her granddaughter, to say a few words in recognition. Thank you.
According to Oprah Daily, "I Am a Girl from Africa" is a profound and soul-nourishing memoir. This autobiographical book tells Elizabeth Narmeriero's story. In the 1980s, Zimbabwe was hit by a devastating drought. The eight-year-old Elizabeth, close to death from hunger, encountered a United Nations aid worker who saved her life. This event caused her to want to dedicate her life to helping others. She became a senior advisor for the United Nations, and in 2014, she launched He for She, a movement for gender equality. Elizabeth Nar... Elizabeth Narmeriero has helped thousands of people and shares her journey in her inspirational book. Throughout her career, my grandmother too, has made a point of helping young people. I hope she'll enjoy reading this story about the impact we create when we invest time in helping others while snuggling up with her two crazy puppies.
And we just wanted to say, on behalf of the PTSA, that we appreciate everything that you do and your dedication to the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Bell. I'm going to mess everybody up, and I'm going to go out of order because I sort of see how this is being arranged in here, so I'll go with the flow here. We're going to ask our Dudley School representative to come up with Principal Jamie Naples, who will be sharing thoughts with her students regarding board member Dr. Mary Caitlin White. Got a whole wonderful group of students.
We have a very large group of us today. Come on, guys. Come on, front. Okay, I'd like to introduce everyone. I'm Jamie Naples, the new proud principal, although I'm not new anymore. Should I still be considered new? Dudley, I'm thrilled to be here and also very thrilled to work with Dr. Mary Caitlin White again. She was on the Board of Education when I was in Greece, so it's a pleasure to be with you again here in Fairport. So I'd like to say thank you to all the Board of Education members for all they do for our school community. Our Student Council members, Tyler Ziedek and Ellie Eleanor White, are here to read a poem to you. In addition, we donated a book to the library. It's called Speak Up, and we chose that book on behalf of Mary Caitlin White. And it was chosen because of belief in equitable opportunities and access to a supportive and high-quality education for all students. She's a strong advocate for every child, the whole child. And this book talks about how everyone has a voice and everybody deserves a seat at the table. So we're going to go here. We have Nolan Harrington, if you could just wave so they can see who you are. Okay? And he is, he's one of our Student Council members. We have Riley Wollenschlager. So Riley, if you could wave so they could see who you are. And we have Lamade Olotu, Camden Shaughnessy, Cam, okay? Tyler Ziedek, and of course Ellie White. All right? And we have Sarah Klosner, our Assistant Principal, and Amy Ziedek, our PTA President. Sarah, if you'd like to come up and talk about Student Council super quick, and then they can read their poem.
So I'm very lucky to be able to help organize for our Student Council each year, and we have four members from our Student Council, which doesn't obviously represent all of our Student Council at second grade, but we have both Cam and Lamade here from Mrs. Chapa's class, and Nolan and Riley here from Mrs. Evans' second-grade class. So they're very excited. All right, Riley, do you want to get us started? I'm going to bend this mic down if you want to talk into the mic, okay?
Thanks for your smile that lights up a room.
Thanks for your laugh that helps drive out the glow.
Thanks for your willingness always to help.
Thanks for thinking about this before you think of yourself.
Thank you a million for the millions lovely things that you do.
Most of all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for just being you.
That's a tough act to follow there, but I know that, I know that some Martha Brown magic is here to speak on behalf of Martha Brown and Dr. Moritz. Mr. Dunn will be coming up with his PTA rep, Stacia Lou, and a group of students.
Good evening. We're not even going to try to beat that one. That was amazing. First of all, on behalf of the Martha Brown School community, I want to thank our Board of Education. I know that this Board Recognition Night, and hopefully you feel this every day of the year. Hopefully, you feel this recognition because we value your leadership, your advocacy. These last two years have been incredibly difficult, and it's just so comforting to have a Board Superintendent that really believes in all kids. And I want to thank you on behalf of all of us at Martha Brown. I'm proud to be here with Stacia Lou, our PTSA President, seventh-grade Soraya, and sixth-grade Britley. And Brian, we did have one more. And yes, I think she's at a show. I think I spent some time with her ninth period, and she wrote a beautiful speech, and hopefully you'll hear from her when she gets home, and picked out a great book. I won't steal the thunder, but we would have had one more here, sorry. Stacia?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Martha Brown PTSA for all of the work that you do. And while we can't match Dudley, I do think I hand, we handpicked the cutest kids at Martha Brown. These are my daughters, so you guys got it.
Good evening. This year, Martha Brown has the honor of recognizing board member Brian Moritz for his dedication and commitment to the Fairport School District. Mr. Moritz willingly gives countless hours of his personal time working with other Board of Education members to ensure each and every student in the Fairport School District receives the best education possible. On behalf of Martha Brown Middle School PTSA, we would like to present this small token of appreciation to you. This is a book entitled Say It Out Loud by Alison Barnes. It is a story, it's a story about Charlotte, a young girl who is self-conscious of her stutter. She says nothing as her best friend is bullied, but as the school year goes on, she realizes some things are worth speaking up for. It's an empowering look at finding your voice, facing your fears, and standing up for what's right. We chose this book because Mr. Moritz believes it's important to speak up for yourself and your friends. This book, Say It Out Loud, will be donated in his name to Martha Brown's library.
I'm always amazed how we're able to pick up the themes and the voices of our board members in these, in these novels, so I appreciate the thought that goes into them. Mr. Charneau will be coming up to speak in regards to Joyce Kostick, who is in her 20th year as a Board of Education member, coming up with Kerry Gersh and a group of fine representatives of Jefferson Avenue.
Good evening, everybody. Ryan Charneau, proud principal of Jefferson Avenue, and really excited to be here to recognize and celebrate our devoted and incredible Board of Education. And I have some really special partners with me today. I have Kerry Gersh, who is an incredible PTA President for the Jaguars, and two co-presidents from our fifth-grade Student Council. And these two individuals assure me that our world is going to be in good hands with the future leaders of tomorrow. And with me here are Olivia Group and Ethan Rigney, and we're really excited to be here, and they have some words to join in.
Tonight, we're here representing the entire Jaguar community to share our appreciation for our outstanding Board of Education. We were given the privilege this evening to recognize and celebrate Joyce Kostick. Joyce, thank you for all you do, for all of the students, faculty, staff of Fairport. We really appreciate all you do.
Good evening. I am fifth grader Olivia Group. We researched Ms. Kostick and learned that she has served an incredible 20 years on the Board of Education. We also know that she has been an advocate for playful learning within our classrooms, which IJAA is a big part of what makes learning fun. We chose a very special book to donate to our JAA library in honor of Ms. Kostick and the playful approach she has brought to our schools.
Well said, Olivia. Good evening, everyone, and I am also a fifth grader at Jefferson Avenue. The book we chose to add to our library in honor of Ms. Kostick is called 101 Movement Games for Children: Fun and Learning with Playful Moving. The summary of the book reads, "The movement games in this book are intended to cultivate children's social and creative abilities. Some are based on playground games, others on professional theater and dance exercises. The games described are divided into 10 categories, including touch and reaction, concentration in puzzles, impersonation and cooperation, and music and movement." I know, I can't wait until my classroom takes out this book.
Ms. Kostick, thank you so, so much for your devotion, and supposedly, there's like this supply order chain, so our book's not in yet. I guess there's this new thing going on. So I have a copy here to show you what it looks like, but when it comes in, we'd love to have you come in, and then that will be a part of our, our library collection, so thank you.
Be seeing some of those movements on the playground, right, Mrs. Kostick? That's, that's the goal. Fairport High School will have Mr. Clark come up with Student Representative Emma Forstgrin.
And we also have our PTSA Vice President Kelly Hodge here with us.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Kelly.
Yeah, no worries. She's doing double duty.
Yep.
I'm working with pros tonight. They've been doing this for so long. I called your daughter in to talk a little bit about, she, I know how to do this. It's all good. So thank you. I want to just take an opportunity to thank the entire board. I'll tell you, the biggest issue that we had is your daughter, there was a lot of books to choose from, and she said she would like any of these three, so we did all three. So I'll let her talk about those.
Hi, I'm Emma. On behalf of the students and staff at Fairport High School, I thank the Board of Education, and especially my dad, Peter Forstgrin, for the hours and hours of work that goes into addressing the needs of our schools, debating the regulations that are needed or not needed, responding to our community, supporting the staff, and most of all, keeping our schools safe and productive learning environment. And I'm going to mention the many, many meetings they have. It has been quite a year. There have been many issues and many opinions expressed over those issues. I am grateful I have a dad that takes the issues home and tries to look at them in a different perspective, asking himself questions, asking questions of others to see what is different. I know he is always learning new ideas on things like race, gender inequality, and the ways women think differently than men. He has noticed things on the Board of Education when men and women have different opinions along gender lines, and it bothers him. And he has revisited asking women if there is a reason why. I appreciate that. So thank you, Dad, or Mr. Forstgrin, and the Board of Education for your service to our community. The students and staff at Fairport High School donate the following books to the library in your honor. Wolf Pack by Abby Wambach is about her experience with and leading her team. She talks a lot about how women can and should achieve greatness. While my dad does support this very much, the main reason this book is being donated is because it is about teamwork, which is something my dad also believes in very much. After the Shot Drops by Andy Ribay, which is a story told from alternating perspectives of two childhood friends. One gets a sports scholarship across town, leaving the other one feeling betrayed. This book shows how important it is to look at other people's perspectives and to always have compassion. No Barriers by Eric Wyonmeyer, the only blind person to summit Mount Everest. However, afterwards, his expedition leader told him, and I quote, "Don't, don't make Everest the greatest thing you ever do." This book is about everything he did after that, and despite all challenges an individual can have, you can't achieve anything. When it comes to talking about my dad, to quote Captain America, "I can do this all day." But I am here to thank him and the school board for their hard work. Thank you all.
I just wanted to tell you, Peter, and the whole board, we appreciate you guys very much. The PTSA appreciates all the support and everything you do for the community, and we just want you to know that you are supported, not only today, but throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Fairport High School team. Do you hear a theme about the meetings, you know, a lot of meetings, you know? I would like Jeremy Slack to come forward. Mrs. Rutter is not able to be here tonight, but Jeremy's excited to represent Northside, and he has some wonderful representatives to speak on behalf of Mr. Damon Buffum.
All right, great, thank you. I am joined here by two awesome Northside heroes, some of our younger, what, third graders who are new to Northside, but they are already making a difference at Northside. And I'm joined by our PTA President Candy Carr, as well as our former PTA Presidents over there too. I'll give a shout out to Angie Torres over there as well. All right, so on behalf of Team Northside, we are honored to recognize Mr. Damon Buffum. Since his election to the Board in 2013, Mr. Buffum has been a champion for students in our community. His love for the Fairport community is evident. We are thankful that Mr. Buffum dedicates his time to serving students, families, staff, and the Fair, in the Fairport Central School District. I have Bree here.
Hi, my name is Bree Torres, and I am in third grade at Northside. We chose two books to honor Mr. Buffum. The first book is Kid's Story, Fifty Children and Younger People Who Shook Up the World. This book introduces students and incredible young people from all over the world who have influenced cultural, political, and social change throughout history, and artists, artists, inventors, and activists in the book were chosen for passion, courage, and creativity. The theme of this book is that you don't have to be an adult to make a difference.
Hi, my name is Garrett Carr, and I am a third grader at Northside. We know that Mr. Buffum loves the New York Yankees. The book, Who Is Derek Jeter, will be a great addition to our library. This book chronicles the life and accomplishments of one of the greatest Yankee captains of all time. Through his life, Derek Jeter has shown that commitment, dedication, and practice lead to success. This book will proudly be displayed in our library, and we think that they will capture the spirit of Mr. Buffum. Thank you, Mr. Buffum.
Excellent choice and excellent work. Yankees.
Next year, we're hoping for Josh Allen.
I believe we have Johanna Perrin Middle School will be coming forward with Mr. Groh and Sarah Driscoll, and Jacob Pacer will be honoring a very special board member.
Yes, thanks for keeping us last. Jacob has a soccer practice he has to get to, so we appreciate him being late for that one, too. But no, on, on behalf of the JP Students and Staff for, for all our board members, really like to say thank you, and we certainly appreciate you leading us through these difficult times. They've certainly been different in the last couple of years, but the support we've gotten from you and certainly from Brett has been great in terms of helping our students and staff get through it and giving us the means to get through it together. And we've done that in a great way, so we appreciate all you have done for us, not only these times, but all times. I'd like to introduce Sarah Driscoll, who's our PTSA President, to say thanks real quick before Jacob comes up.
I just want to say thank you. I've been a part of a PTA Board for five years. These meetings are probably my favorite, and I know that this is not just an appointment for you, but a passion, so thank you all for your continued support. We have Jacob Pacer presenting to Erica Pacer. I think they know each other, so I'll let him get to it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jacob Pacer, and I'm, I'm a seventh grader at JP. On behalf of the students at JP, I'd, I'd like to thank all of the board members for their service, and we appreciate all you do to keep our schools running. For our board, board appreciation, we are recognizing Erica Bellis Pacer, who is currently serving as Vice President, serving Vice President, and is also my mother. I know how hard she works and how much time she spends working to make sure our district is doing all we can to make sure, to make sure our experience is a great one in Fairport Schools. For our gift, our PTS, PTSA has helped us purchase a book that we will have in circulation in our school library. It is called Trending, and written by Kira Vermon. The book is about fads and trends. How, how do they start? Why do they spread? And how deep can their impact be? Other trends might, trends might seem trivial. If you dig deeper, you'll find that your desire to chase the next big thing can have an even bigger impact than expected. Established middle school author Kira, no, not middle school, middle grade author Kira Vermon, and cartoonist Cartoon, Cartoon, Cartoon Hem, or team up in this fun and accessible nonfiction book at fads. In four short chapters, the book explores what a fad is, how the latest craze catch on, and how, and what makes us jump on the bandwagon. It looks at the fascinating and even frightening effects of fads, both modern and historic. Who knew the beaver pellet craze in 17th century Europe would change ecosystems, start wars, and disrupt life as people know it? Comic strips, illustration, and upbeat tone, and reader-friendly texts make this a fun and timely tool for young readers who are building critical thinking in the age of fake news and the world gone viral. Thanks again to the whole board, especially my mom.
Last but definitely not least, we have Brooks Hill, who is going to come forward with Meredith Klus, Principal, and our board, excuse me, our PTA Representative Lisa Turner, to give the very important proclamation for all board members.
Hi, good evening. I am Lisa Turner, PTA Co-President at Brooks Hill. On behalf of the staff, students, and families of Brooks Hill School, we would like to formally recognize the Board of Education this evening. We appreciate your dedication to the Fairport School community. In Fairport, we are fortunate to have Board of Education members who are committed to providing all of our students with a quality education that supports the growth of the whole child. Mrs. Klus will now introduce the students who have come to honor you all.
Good evening. Thank you so much. The proclamation's always an interesting one to have because it doesn't zero in on a single one of you, but instead represents what you are as a group, which is really important to us and the community. It also gives us the opportunity to read some really complex words because proclamations tend to be a little bit wordy and maybe not as fun as in individualized ones, but I have three young men here who are going to do an outstanding job. The cool thing about doing the proclamation is that we, we're not tied to in any particularly motherly-son, grandfatherly-cousinly way, so I have chosen three wonderful role models who really represent Brooks Hill's best. And so with me tonight, I was able to just choose, which is pretty cool. I have Darren Fairley, I have Alex Fairley, and Jack Belagatti, who will all represent Brooks Hill well as they speak to you. So here we go.
Whereas the week of October 18th through 24th was Board of Education Recognition Week in the state of New York, and whereas the members of our Board of Education, Ms. Kostick, Ms. Cardona, Mr. Buffum, Mr. Forstgrin, Dr. Mary Caitlin White, Ms. Eric, Eloise Pacer, and Mr. Brian Moritz have demonstrated, demonstrated their dedication and commitment to the Fairport Community, and...
Whereas this commitment, making sure that all Fairport children have an access to an equal education because of the Fairport representatives of the future, and whereas the outstanding efforts of the, and dedication of the Board of Education to make the whole child, makes our school a better community, an awesome place to learn and grow, and...
Whereas the students of Brooks Hill School show appreciation for the Board of Education members... members who give their time and energy to this challenging and worthwhile cause. Therefore, we, the Brooks Hill School community, along with all of the Fairport schools, do hereby recognize the week of October 18th through the 24th was Board of Education Recognition Week, and urge all Fairport Red Raiders to come together to participate in giving thanks to our Board of Education members.
Again, thank you for all you do on behalf of Brooks Hill and all of our schools.
Social awareness, compassion, open-mindedness, voice, access, equity, justice, wellness, New York Yankees. Civic engagement, leadership in service to a greater purpose. That's our Board of Education. And it's amazing how those stories were just shared. We appreciate all the effort and thought, but it can also boil down to one word, it's love. They love what they do, they love this community, they love our children, they want to make sure that they have every opportunity to be successful. So from, you know, the bottom of my heart, I thank you. It's a joy and pleasure to work with and serve with all of you. Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you all. It's always, I think I've said it before, people have told me it would be a thankless job 10 years ago. I've never found that to be the case, not in this community at least. So very grateful for all those who express their gratitude throughout the year, and I appreciate that tonight. Now, going to take a pause soon, but before I do so, I hope some will stay around, especially those who are in our youngest grades. We're going to do a bright spot, will be part of our agenda from here on out as well. We've kind of been doing it, but we've given it an official name. And for the youngest ones, the reason I point out to you is these are some of the things that I think you have to look forward to in terms of what goes on within our district that we like to celebrate. And I truly do love celebration. I think there's many awesome things going on, and tonight we just want to recognize a couple of them around music, arts, and athletics in terms of the opportunities that exist for all students here in the district.
I'm an elementary administrator, but also a parent. And so as my parent role, I have the opportunity for my kids to be engaged in two different things. I have a fourth grade daughter who just was able to start chorus last year. The excitement that last Thursday brought, sincerely, she said it was the best day of her life. The excitement I see as we have arrival and the kids are coming out of ensembles, which we've seen through the last week, whether it's band, orchestra, or chorus, their excitement, their enthusiasm, the kind of vibe and the noise level that you hear going down the hall just shows me that they're really excited to be back into ensembles.
With everybody back together again and in one room, it's a much fuller sound, but also it's a much more appealing vibe. And everyone's there, making music, making laughs, having fun, and that's what music's about.
I'm looking forward to doing a concert.
What is your favorite part about art?
Drawing, and drawing with markers and colors in the paint.
Your arms and legs, and your hands and feet, okay? Everything you need is right there. Good job, Natalie.
I can't do it, it's glued down to the ceiling.
No, sorry. No worries. There, and then we can go on.
I think what I like most about middle school is helping kids find their artistic journey. I think everybody's finding kind of their own path and figuring out who they are, and that's probably the most exciting part about middle school, because you find that with the way that they create art too.
What's bothering you about this one?
What I love about the art program is our cohesiveness, you know, from K through 12. We do, you know, converse quite often with other departments, you know, at high school, at JP, at Martha Brown, and in elementary school. So we kind of build the program from the bottom up. What I do like also about it is that, you know, we're able to change things periodically. We have the curriculum that we follow, and we go through New York State standards and we follow along, but we also are able to change projects, we're able to change techniques, and with that collaboration amongst that cohesive whole, we're able to bring kind of our best foot forward when we have our classes. So I think it's super cohesive, and it's really nice to have a group like this.
I am most excited about our art show. We haven't had the art show in a couple of years, so it'll be nice to have that in person again. We're going to hold it in the month of March, so that'll be coming up very soon. So we're starting to collect artwork, and we're all very excited to have that back this year.
So at swimming sectionals this year, I set as the school record two years ago, so I was able to break that. So that was just super fun, and like being surrounded by my team and them all congratulating me, it was just really fun. And then our relay, our 200 freestyle relay also made states, and that had some younger girls on that. So just like being a part of, like as a senior and them being eighth graders, doing that together was super cool. So the overall sexual experience was probably what I was most proud of.
I've been involved in the soccer program since, I think it was around 2010, when I moved here from Texas. My brother played freshman, and I ballboyed for him. And I ballboyed him up until he was on varsity, and then he graduated, and then my next brother played varsity, and then he graduated, and then I got to play with my other brother on varsity together. So I've been a part of the program for a while. I think like my individual highlight of the fall season is when I scored the game winner against McQuade in overtime, and I ran over and gave my mom a big hug, and had like the whole student section there. But like team-wise, I think it was how we battled back from that game, and we were down 2-0 at halftime, and, you know, just never gave up and kept fighting, got the win.
Fairport Field Hockey, as a program, ran two charity games. Our first game was Lacedaup for Gold, Pediatric Cancer, and we also honored Hannah Metzler, who was a goalie for Fairport Field Hockey. And we also did a breast cancer game where the girls collected over $1,000 worth of items to donate to the Breast Cancer Coalition of Rochester.
So I think the relationships for the swim team, they'll always have the rest of their life, and that's the joy, just seeing connecting and getting to know one another, all the different grade levels. Truly unique, and that's what athletics does, is builds relationships that carry on for the rest of their life.
What is most exciting about Fairport's athletic program?
I think the community spirit. I have never been a part of a school district that's had as much support and spirit for their athletics like Fairport. And it's been that way ever since I can remember, you know, in the 80s, going to games, and then in the 90s, coaching against Fairport and just watching them. There's always been a lot of respect that I've had for Fairport and the school district and the community. To me, it's like the New York Yankees or the Green Bay Packers. It's really, really exciting. The community makes the program.
I would like to thank Toni Exton and Christina Gerslin for putting that together and managing all the parts to tell a little story. Definitely lots to celebrate as we re-enter and come back to school full-time. There's lots of great opportunities come this winter, particularly in March, when we celebrate the arts, and we'll be talking about all the great accomplishments that our artists achieved. So stay tuned for more information. Stop that voice in the background. Oh, it's still going. It's not good for the ADD, just so you know.
Thank you, thanks for the bright spot. I don't want to call this an official recess necessarily, just a short time period for those, especially with children, if they like to step out. We'll pause this long enough to make a convenient exit for those who are here for the recognition. Thank you for coming though, to all the students, we appreciate your time. Okay, it became an official recess, I guess, since everybody left. Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting. Thank you, and thanks for letting us take a little break there. We have next on our agenda our Student Advisor Report from Sarah Grober, who, if I might, while you're coming on up, Sarah, participated in the, oh, now that, what was it called? Thank You, Wall of Distinction Ceremony, introducing to one person who was absent and represented, I'm going to mention a little bit more, I guess during Presence Report, but such a great job there, and the Wall of Distinction was awesome, but you, you know, all the students, all those here today, and you, cherry on top, I guess, keep making this really a, give us great confidence in what's going on in the school. Sarah, thank you.
She's a pro, Mr. Clerk, she's got that.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm delighted to provide you all with an update of how Fairport High School has been running during the past couple of months. To begin, I'd like to applaud our drama club for a successful production of Clue. They had three showings in the beginning of this month with substantial crowds at each one. In addition to the drama club's presentations, our symphonic band and orchestra had wonderful performances. It's really important that we support our actors and musicians since they work just as hard as our talented athletes. But speaking of athletes, we do want to congratulate our girls tennis players, cheerleaders, girls swimmers and divers, boys cross-country runners, and girls soccer players for their hard work and dedication that led them all to win Section V championship titles. We are anticipating an impressive winter sports season for all teams as well. The Wall of Distinction induction was a genuine and heartfelt experience for not only the 2020 and 2021 inductees, but for the students who presented their awards as well. Ten students were chosen to attend a luncheon to interview their assigned inductee, in which they wrote a speech about to give the following night. These experiences were so unique, as each student was able to connect with a past teacher or administrator and gain a valuable mentor in the process. A huge part of November so far has been the senior trip to Boston. Although they couldn't quite escape the torrential rain, they were able to take the ferry across the Charles River, take the duck chores, visit the New England Aquarium, explore Harvard Square, and have the time of their lives at the Friday Night Dance. It really is the trips like these that give our students the cherished memories that will last a lifetime, and it would not be possible without our caring staff and chaperones. I'm so glad to say that this school year has fell almost completely back to normal. Our administrators and staff have been doing everything they possibly can to make Fairport schools safe, productive, and an overall enjoyable experience. Thank you so much to the Board and to everyone here for making Fairport a community that never fails to support its youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, so much. That brings us to the public comment portion of the agenda tonight. A few things we always talk about beforehand, although this is a new one, I should have mentioned this in the past, but for anyone who's joining livestream, because there's always questions if they show up at the YouTube, or if they're watching this on a recording later, we do pause this, and it should resume in about 35 minutes.